All right, good evening. We're gonna call a meeting to order at this time, everyone. Good evening, welcome to everyone.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
I keep forgetting about her. Sorry, Siri or whoever you are. Okay. All right. It's Thursday, February seventeenth, six thirty P M. In the year of two thousand twenty-two, we're into February already. Welcome to the Village Council meeting for Royal Palm Beach. I ask everyone to stand, please, and join us in pledge allegiance. Diane, please let the record show that all members of council.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
All this time my mic wasn't on? I gotta do the whole thing over? Nobody's answering me. I could swear I turned this mic on. We're good? Did you, you saw that? Okay. Let me keep going. Yeah, we did notice the election, let the record show that, right? Whereas the local recognition of Bicycle Month in the Village of Royal Palm Beach will increase awareness of the alternative transportation options throughout the village, while promoting the health benefits of bicycling along with reducing traffic congestion, ultimately popularize bicycling as viable, attractive, alternative mode of transportation. And now therefore, uh, on this day is the Village of Royal Palm Beach hereby proclaims March twenty, uh, twenty-two as Royal Palm Beach Bicycle Month. And encourage all residents and visitors to safely explore the convenience and benefits of bicycling as an alternative to the motorized transportation throughout the village. Signed and sealed the seventeenth day of February two thousand twenty-two. Now, we have a bicycle thing coming up, right?
Yeah, rodeo.
Rodeo? What, are you gonna talk about that? You probably gonna talk about that, right?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. So we wanna get, we wanna, we do wanna get the word out as much as possible to have our residents and visitors come out to participate in that opportunity. Okay, this proclamation is a very important proclamation and it underscores the efforts that we in the village for many years have tried to make our residents here in the village aware of these services that are provided at the county level so they can take advantage of them. Whereas two-one-one helpline is entering its sixth decade of quality and caring service to the community. Whereas over this span of time, two-one-one helpline has responded to over three million requests for help from people of all walks of life, providing the guidance and support they've needed. Two-one-one continues to do so through these trying times and whereas mental and emotional health addiction, housing, utilities, food insecurity, and health concerns are the top needs expressed by people reaching out to us. And whereas two-one-one's caring staff continue to be the beacon of hope, providing crisis support and resources when people are overwhelmed and do not know where to turn. Two-one-one is available at any time of day or night. And whereas two-one-one also has specialized advocacy and support programs that include the caregiver support project, the special needs helpline, Help Me Grow, Catching Children's Developmental Delays Early, Elder Crisis Outreach, and whereas two-one-one's Life-saving Sunshine, daily telephone resources calls continue to brighten the lives of local isolated seniors and helps expand to include isolated caregivers. And whereas, two-one-one's My Florida Veterans provides peer-to-peer support and helps veterans to readjust, providing linkage to services for veterans and their families. Now therefore, I proclaim hereby proclamation, this proclamation on February two thousand twenty-two as two-one-one Awareness Month. In the Village of Royal Palm Beach and urge all citizens to be aware that if they are overwhelmed and in crisis but just need to talk, two-one-one is available any time of the day or night. Two-on-one staff can also provide referrals for mental health counseling, substance abuse, healthcare, employment, food assistance, daycare, support groups, volunteering, V I T A free income tax preparation, and so much more. Signed and sealed the seventeenth day of February two thousand twenty-two. I will say I personally had the opportunity over the years, I would say now maybe hundreds of people who have contacted me about problems they've had, and I've been able to steer them to using the two-one-one service to try to find help. It is really an important service that is provided and we, the more people know about it, the more people can receive the support and help that they provide. So, it's a good, good program there. Okay, um, that does it for the proclamations. We're gonna take our reports and I guess we'll start.
Good evening, everyone. Also along with that, I didn't see it in the proclamation, but they're amazing with suicide prevention as well. So especially these times with everyone, it, it's a great resource. We had, Young at Heart had their February event, they had a singer again that did songs from the fifties and sixties, so she sang Frank Sinatra, Paul Anka and that group was another great group that they had. Their, the Senior Meal Program is gonna restart March twenty-first, and you can call Shakira over at the rec center, five-six-one-seven-five-three-one-two-four-one for information on that. Youth baseball and softball opening ceremonies over at Bob Marcello Park tomorrow, so it's over the complex Friday the eighteenth at six-thirty. I think we're gonna be there at six o'clock. Youth soccer spring season starts on Monday, February twenty-first. And then this past Saturday, we had the Third Annual Barky Pines Five K over at Commons Park. They had over two-hundred and thirty participants, and I love that it keeps getting bigger and they keep doing the event here, so thank you to the staff and everyone for doing that. Commons Park, they do their concerts the first and third Friday of the month, so Brothers of Others Rock and Roll is playing tomorrow. And then they do movies the second and fourth Saturday. So next Saturday's Frozen. And as the mayor had mentioned, we have the Family Bike Rodeo on March twenty-sixth over Commons Park from nine A M. to one P M. And the weekend before that is the Seafood Festival, so that'll be on the nineteenth and twentieth of March from eleven to eight over at Commons Park as well. And that completes, oh, and the other thing is congratulations to our very own Lou Recio who made the cover of Royal Palm Magazine. I don't know if the glare is from his head or from the lighting. But there's a lot of, a lot of great articles in this one, though, and congratulations to Lou for making the cover, everything. Thank you.
Before you go, Richard, I did, I was remiss, I also wanted to mention, I wanna thank Councilman Hamara who brought the two-one-one proclamation to our attention. It might have gotten by us, so thank you very much, because I think it's an important information we put out.
I think so, too. Thank you.
I'd just like to tell Lou that, uh, my aunt used to say, grass doesn't grow on a busy street, so. It's a good look. I don't really have a report, but, uh...
That's what you got, huh?
Just, just in case anyone is interested in high school track and field, um, next week, the twenty-third, at Royal Palm Beach High School, it's gonna be the first track meet of the season. And, uh, I'll be there, 'cause I have a kid involved, so.
All right.
All right. What's he running?
What, what?
What's he running?
He, uh, well, he had a little incident, so I don't think he's gonna be doing his hurdles. So some type of sprinting events that his body will allow him to do.
Okay.
He's good enough to run, well, he's good enough to run now, I'm just not sold on him doing the, uh, the hurdles is what he got injured on, so.
I could tell you some stories about hurdles.
Yeah, exactly, so.
In track and field.
Daddy's saying no hurdles for now. He's looking forward to it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll see if he listens to you.
Good, okay. Good evening, everybody. So, Florida League of Cities Action Day in Tallahassee every year, uh, February eighth and ninth, we had this year, so I attended it. It was, um, a, a very informative event and brought back with me the key legislative issues flyer, so I'm gonna pass that out. And, um, we work from that to go to each one of the legislative offices, broken into regional groups from the individual leagues of city. And as usual, uh, we started off with Florida League of Cities lobbying staff giving us an update on some of those key measures, uh, key bills that they wanted us to, uh, to address. They're working on about two-thirty or two-forty bills out of the three thousand bills that were filed. And, uh, and, uh, as you can see, one of the main, uh, bills right at the top on one side is a sovereign immunity bill. And the concern there, uh, which puts Florida League of Cities in opposition to that bill both in the Senate and the House, is that while they're okay with raising, uh, the limits per claim and limits per incident, um, because it has been ten years since that was raised, it is, um, they're opposed to what they consider to be unreasonably high limits, uh, because it's, it really incentivizes litigation and, and that's a primary concern. So I'm not gonna go into any of these others, I've asked Keith if he would talk to whichever among these he thinks is most potentially impactful on Royal Palm Beach, uh, in just a moment. But I did wanna mention that I, I thought it was a reasonably successful session, we actually had at least one representative who, as a result of our conversations, uh, which included our personal experiences as to why we're opposed to these things, what we expect to happen or have had happen, or in one case, why we support it, because we're recovering some of our own rule. So, it was a good session, I think it was worthwhile, and one of the legislators actually took action to become a co-sponsor on a couple of those bills that we supported, so it was the most positive action I've seen in a long time in that direction, it was worth the time and worth the effort. Our Education Advisory Board meeting this month, it was on Monday, and yes, that was Valentine's Day. And, um, I don't know who the heck scheduled it like that. Oh, wait, we did, okay. But Principal Stephanie Nance was there from Crestwood Middle School, and she brought us up to date on a lot of things going on, I could talk to two of them. One, actually she brought a band ensemble with her. Uh, and they sat right over there and played a couple of songs, Louie Louie for one, so, in honor of, no, it isn't really, but anyway, uh, it was really well done. The ensemble was made up of about a dozen, um, musicians out of a band that right now has a hundred and thirty members in Crestwood Middle School, so that's pretty, pretty remarkable. The other thing that I wanted to share with you that, um, Principal Nance was talking about is something that's really important for Crestwood Middle School, and that is that they have applied to become a Cambridge International School. And that is akin to the I B program we have at Royal Palm Beach High School in that it's, it's a very, um, a very rigorous curriculum. It contains all of the basics of English, math, and so forth, but it does it with a global perspective as well as offering, um, critical thinking, presentation skills, all designed to enable them to follow up for an ACE diploma, uh, in high school here at Royal Palm Beach High School. Now, ACE is a pretty big deal, because it automatically entitles a recipient to Bright Futures Scholarship, so that's, it's a really very positive thing, and, uh, they've got a ways to go, uh, because as with the I B program, it's a very rigorous process that they have to go through with onsite visits and evaluations, uh, by the Cambridge International School, uh, but it's a, it's a really positive thing, so congratulations to them in engaging on that. The district gave us a report about a number of things, but the one that stuck with me was the significant shortage of substitute teachers that they're experiencing right now. Uh, and, and with that in mind, of course, then, um, they reach out to their administrative staff and the district staff, and now they get a chance to come back into the classroom, maybe not a bad thing. But they've also increased the pay for subs, which I think is likely to, to help them actually, uh, get some of those teachers that they really need at this point. There's a lot of work to be done clearly to help our students and our schools recover from the pandemic impacts, but seems like there are a nu, number of initiatives that are headed in the right direction here, not the least of which is social, emotional learning activities that are underway. And then finally, Feeding South Florida is entering its twenty-third month. And we continue to see at least five hundred, six hundred cars pickups, uh, the first and third Wednesday of each month, uh, which, what's really neat is that we keep getting new volunteers. I've seen snowbirds show up a lot of places. We had a bunch of snowbirds this past Wednesday, yesterday, I guess it was. And, um, so this is impacting the community in a, in an interesting way that I don't think we ever expected, but continues on and we couldn't do it, of course, without the, uh, parking rec staff doing a great job that they do. So, thank you to them for that, and thanks to the volunteers, and show up eight o'clock, first and third Wednesday over at Commons Park. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good, that's it.
Good evening, everyone. Piggybacking up, up on, uh, Mayor's proclamation for the election notice, we also have the candidates forum coming up on Tuesday, the twenty-second, at seven P M., um, for the two candidates who are running, so just announcement there. And then I attended the, uh, issues forum, remember this is a quarterly countywide, um, committee with about fifty-five representatives. And our big topic is, um, Housing for All, and, uh, they presented the housing plan that was created by the Housing Leadership Council. Their, um, initiatives are funding around the issue, planning and regulatory reform, neighborhood revitalization and community development, and racial equity. And they went over the plan extensively, and, um, I think most people were hung up on the funding piece.
Really? Gee, that's a surprise.
I know, shocking, right? And then the two, uh, looking at a bond and the two ways to do that, and Administrator Virginia kind of leading the, um, conversation on recommendations, but more to follow. These, these committees take, um, time, but that's, that's what we talked about in the last one.
Okay.
That's my report, thank you.
Great.
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Oh, it's difficult to know where to start.
Oh, that's a good way to start.
Of the bajillions of bills and the thousands that are, um, challenging, let me, um, just hit a few highlights so we're not here all night. As Mr. Hamara mentioned, the sovereign immunity bill, as it stands right now, um, with the current amendments that, that are, um, going through the committees, if it was, if it was passed today, it would change the sovereign immunity waiver limits to a million dollars per person and three million dollars per incident, which would increase, um, so much higher than, than what it is right now.
Does that look like it's gonna pass?
Well, the numbers keep changing, it seems to be a moving target, or as far as the numbers, but, you know, it's gone through all of its committees, um, so it's headed to the floor, um, so I suspect it's going to, there, there will be an increase.
Something's gonna pass.
Yeah, I don't know what the final numbers will be, but, but yeah. That is, uh, Senate Bill nine seventy-four, House Bill nine eighty-five. Vacation rentals continue to be a hot topic, uh, House Bill three twenty-five and Senate Bill five twelve. These bills actually talk about allowing the local government to re, uh, require vacation rental registrations at the local level. And it would actually authorize the state, uh, through the division of hotel and restaurant, to revoke or suspend a state license if a vacation rental fails to comply with the local registration requirement. Whether that would happen or not, I don't know. Grandfathering continues to be honored, at least that's something that's good. If a, uh, local government, uh, if, if this passes in its current status, the maximum registration fee would be fifty dollars. And, uh, that's suspension, um, as it's written right now, the state could suspend a vacation rental license for no more than thirty days if it was found that, um, the particular property had two or more code enforcement violations, so that there's a lot of hoops to jump through, but that, that's the current status of that one. This one is, um, this next one would apply to each of you individually, Senate Bill five-ten and House Bill three-oh-one contemplates, and this is in, in going through with the committees, this would, if passed, require, uh, local elected officials as well as manager to not, not just file the Form One Statement of Financial Disclosure, but instead have to file the full, um, and public disclosure of financial interest form, which is the one, which is the more comprehensive.
Yeah.
That actually requires you to put numbers down and sources of income and, and all of that, so, um, that is, has worked its way through several committees. We're keeping an eye on that one as well.
The county bodies pushing that, make that pass.
I just had a question, I saw that, uh, who is it that files the Form Six now, or in general, what type of?
State constitutional officers, I believe county commissioners.
County commissioners, yeah.
Basically putting us on the same level, reporting level as, okay, thank you.
You would no longer file Form One, you'd file Form Six.
Sure.
If that passed. Yeah, and, and very, you know, it, it's, you know, Form One doesn't really require you to disclose actual numbers, Form Six absolutely does, so. Then there are the two bills, uh, Senate Bill six-twenty and House Bill five sixty-nine, that's the one that, uh, authorizes claims for business damages based on a new ordinance that's adopted.
That one, yes.
It would require, uh, in order to, to qualify a business, would have to prove that it had been in operation in Florida for at least three years, and that the local government's ordinance caused a reduction of at least fifteen percent of the business's revenue or profit. There are exceptions or exemptions, uh, for ordinances that deal with, um, land use, building codes, fire codes, uh, or budgets, or ordinances required by state or federal law, so there are some exceptions, but, but that is also working its way, uh, through the various committees, and seems to be on its way to the floor. And then, in, interestingly, you know, uh, Senate Bill two-eighty originally was, this is the one that would require a local government to, um, prepare a business impact statement before adopting an ordinance, and, you know, I had mentioned this a few months ago, and at that point in time, it was fairly alarming, uh, that Florida League of Cities has actually changed its position on this and is now supporting it because, um, well, number one, there, there's pretty much a foregone conclusion, there is enough support that this will pass. But there have been enough friendly amendments that have made it, not, I won't say a good thing, but at least stomachable.
Is that more stomachable?
That was stomachable. It's a legal term.
It's a legal term, you got it, okay.
For example, um, while attorney's fees are still, uh, awardable, they're capped at a maximum of fifty thousand dollars, um, in order to be able to challenge an ordinance under, under the statute, the person would have to have been involved in the adoption process by attending a workshop or a public hearing and voicing their objections at that time. So if you didn't come to a public hearing and say, you know, "I object, this is gonna cause my business problems," you can't just sit on the sideline silent and then wait to tee up a lawsuit, you have to be involved, you have to voice your concerns during the adoption process at some point. So that's all, that's a good thing. And like the business damages, uh, legislation, there are exempt ordinances, same types of ordinances, the land development, building and fire codes, uh, budgetary ordinances and things that are required by state or federal law.
Okay, so, in that, in that lawsuit process, who has the burden of proof that there was actual damage done?
The, the plaintiff, the business owner, the person who files the suit challenging the ordinance would have the burden to, and, and that's another thing that, that through the amendment process, um, originally this bill proposed some, some very, um, business-friendly, um, considerations that the court was required to look at and, and made it very plaintiff-friendly, those have all been removed from the amendment, by amendment at this time. So it, for all those reasons, the league has actually changed its position and supports this bill in its current form, because, because of all of that.
I assume that this is not, there's no retroactive feature?
No, it would be for, for new ordinances that are going forward. And then the last one is actually, um, on the good side, it's, it's House Bill one-oh-five and Senate Bill two-twenty-four, will allow local governments, um, to further restrict smoking within the boundaries of any public beach or public park that they own. You could also do, um, similar restrictions in a park in your jurisdiction that's owned by the county, as long as it doesn't conflict with any county ordinance, so that, that seems to be making its way through the, uh, committee, uh, process as well. So, uh, I will leave it at that for tonight, there's plenty of other bills out there, but those I think all touch on Royal Palm Beach or, or the five or six of you in some, in some form or fashion.
Very busy session, I can see.
Yeah, we thought last year was bad, this year is, uh, they're outdoing themselves, so. Thank you. That will conclude my report.
So that concludes all the reports this evening. At this time, are there any petitions that anyone would like to present to the council? No? Seeing none, I'm closing the floor into accepting petitions. Do we have any advance statements from the public on items not on the agenda or items on the consent agenda?
No, Mayor, no statements.
Where do you have anyone with their hand raised who wants to make a public comment on item not on the agenda or items on the consent agenda?
No, Mayor.
Okay, then I'm gonna close the floor to non-agenda item, public comments and consent agenda items, public comment, and ask Diane to give us the consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of January twentieth, twenty-two. Two, approval of six special event permits for Our Lady, Queen of the Apostles Catholic Church to hold a fish fry at one hundred Crestwood Boulevard on March fourth, March eleventh, March eighteenth, March twenty-fifth, April first, and April eighth, twenty-two, from five P M. to seven P M. Three, approval and authorization to renew Project Doc's electronic project management and plan review systems, annual software as a service, licensing and hosting subscription with Evolve Software Corporation for the amount of one hundred and six, one hundred and six thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars. Four, adoption of Resolution number twenty-two oh-four, Resolution of the Village Council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, adopting a revised schedule of fees and charges, specifically repealing Resolution twenty-two oh-one, providing that this schedule of fees and charges shall be available for inspection at all times at the village hall during regular business hours, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Five, approval of a special event permit for the Village of Royal Palm Beach to hold a bike trail and sa, safety rodeo at Royal Palm Beach Commons on Saturday, March twenty-sixth, twenty-two, from nine A M. until one P M. And six, approval of the, approval of the village manager to execute the second addendum to provisions of services agreement between the Village of Royal Palm Beach and ProChamps to extend the term of the agreement for the second one-year renewal period from March tenth, twenty-two, through March tenth, twenty-two-three.
Thank you, Diane. Any comments, questions for members on council? Seeing none, then I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your motion in a second, on the paper?
Aye.
Any appeals? You have no poll, Diane, please let the record show that the consent agenda was approved by zero. approved five-zero. Regular agenda item one is a public hearing to consider variance application two-one-dash-nine-eight, an application by Herbert Donowitz, Donowitz, in variance order V C dash-two-two-dash-zero-one. The applicant is requesting a variance from section twenty-six dash-seven-nine-sub-four-sub-D to allow for a reduced setback of eight-point-five feet for an existing pergola where village code requires fifteen feet. A variance of six-point-five feet for a property located at two-four-five Ponderosa Court. This is a quasi-judicial activity, so I'll ask.
Thank you, sir. If the applicants could approach the podium? And Bradford, I'll swear you in at the same time. Can you state your name for the record?
Bradford O'Brien.
Thank you. Can you both raise your right hands? Bradford, raise your right hand. Do you all swear if you tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, Brad. Excuse me, ask if there are any ex parte disclosures on this item?
None, just staff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Bradford, are you out there?
Yes, sir, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The applicant is requesting a variance from section twenty-six seventy-nine four D to allow for a reduced side setback of eight-and-a-half feet where the village code requires fifteen feet, a variance of six-and-a-half feet. The applicant is requesting the variance to allow the placement of an existing pergola that measures twelve feet by twenty-four feet. The village sent out the required mail notice to all residents within three-hundred-foot radius of the subject property, notifying property owners of the variance request. The village should not receive any responses either supporting or rejecting to the application. Highlighted here in blue is the setback of the pergola to the side setback. The applicant asserts that the only space in the yard where I quote, sorry, quote, "the only space in the yard where I could have built pergola to enjoy my backyard with family and members." The pergola is inside the homeowner's yard and cannot affect or be injurious to neighborhood or public welfare. Village Code, section twenty-six thirty-two F six, allows the village council to grant variances to the code when special conditions and circumstances exist do not result from the actions of the applicant, will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. A literal interpretation of the provisions of this division would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. The variance granted is a minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the land, will be in harmony with the general intent, purpose of this division, will not be injurious to the area involved. Village chef is not in support of this variance. Staff believes that no special conditions or circumstances exist which are not applicable to other lands. The condition is a result from actions of the applicant. Literal interpretation of the code does not deprive the applicant the rights enjoyed by other lands in the same zoning district. This item was considered by the Plan Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, and was recommended approval by a vote of four to one, with Commissioner David Leland dissenting. Again, staff is recommending denial of this application. But I would like to go back to the aerial of this application. As you would notice, that this property is on a corner lot and that this, this next slide shows that the pergola is adjacent to a roadway and not adjacent to a neighbor to the side or to the rear of the structure. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, Bradford, this is clarification. All right, so you're saying the other side, I can see the roadway. What's, what's on the other side of it?
This, this right here is where the pergola is located.
Right.
And this right here is a roadway. So it's not as though they're asking for a variance to locate the pergola closer to the side yard setback where they have a neighbor.
So the variance request is really against the roadway?
Yes, sir.
Got it, okay. All right. Questions? Would you like to make any comments before we take questions from members on council? No? So it was presented failure, you believe, by Bradford, sir? You comfortable with the way it was presented? There's nothing you want to add? Okay. Questions for members on council, okay?
I do. Bradford, could you put the aerial back up for us, please? All right, so we understand the size, I understand that there's the road there. Considering, is there any other area that the pergola could have gone in that section if it was a different size or anything that would have met code?
It would be tough to tell. He has a pool here in this area, maybe snugged up against the house or pushed closer towards the house to where he's outside of the setback area. That's, those are the only options that he would have had.
Okay, so it could have been closer to the house or built that way?
I feel.
Okay, and then they wouldn't have needed a variance?
You have some area here where if it was pushed closer to the house, then yes, I think that he would be outside of the setback.
Okay, from that. And then my other question is, do you know if there was a variance that was granted for the pool and spa area?
The spa, the pool and spa area, you know, I didn't check to see if they had building permits, so I'm going to go ahead and assume that they did, and they do meet the setbacks.
And that they did meet the requirement for that. Okay, thank you.
Correct. You're welcome.
Any other questions? I guess my other question is, when was this built? And did you build it or was it on the property when you bought the property? You built it? Did you have a contractor do it for you or did you do it yourself? You did, it was to do it yourself? Okay. See what, see the problem, guys? Okay, no, that's okay. Go ahead.
To that point, then, has it been inspected and did it pass inspection? Because if you built it yourself, it's a pergola for hurricane resistance. So has it been, did it pass a code that it is a structure that is stable?
If I could add to that, he actually was cited in code enforcement for that being there with no permit. That's how he started in the process, so he's, permit has not been issued because the variance has not been granted, and they can't issue the permit because of the location of the setback.
Okay, but then it will be, okay, gotcha, thanks. Just for safety purposes.
Right now, it's a catch twenty-two.
Right, I just wanted to make sure, thanks.
Any other questions? I just, I guess the point that I made when I asked Bradford about the setback that's in violation is really against the street, which I think explains why we didn't receive any, any input from any of the neighbors, because it really doesn't seem to be impacting the neighbors. The side that does have setback to the nearest neighbor, it seemed to be more than it required itself. Unless there's any major disagreement, I'd look for a motion perhaps that we should approve this variance.
I'll make a motion to approve. I just like to see, it seems so many times, it's, I guess people fall into the adage of it's better to ask forgiveness than permission, but as Selena pointed out, I mean, it would, would be unfortunate if you get the variance and then your structure isn't going to pass code and then you, I don't know what, where it goes from there.
Middy, what, where does it go? That if, if we grant the variant, a variance, and then it does not pass inspection and it needs to be removed, do they then have to come in the proper way with permits first before rebuilding?
So he, a couple of things could happen. The variance would, would stay in place if granted tonight by the council.
So he'd be able to, they'd be able to have it.
Right, they would just have to rebuild the structure or fix the structure, right.
I don't know, I've never.
So if I could throw in here, so pergola is just like a frame and it's got slats or something like that as a root, right? It's not a real heavy-duty major structure with closed sides or anything else, right? Okay, and so really more for appearance and a little bit of shade than it is for anything else, if I understand what a pergola is. And I better, because I got one in the back of my house.
Uh-oh.
At least that's what they told you it was.
Never showed up at your door.
No, they did already. We've been down that road. We got a permit, but. That's the only comment I have to offer. So we have a motion in a second, half-second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R-one was approved five-zero. Good luck with the next step in your process. Thank you. Okay, agenda item R-two is a public hearing to consider application number two-zero-one-five, an application by Evans Land Consulting in adoption of Resolution two-zero-one-seven confirming the council's action. The applicant is seeking final plat approval for one parcel of land totaling approximately a hundred and fifty-six acres located on the south side of Southern Boulevard, approximately two-point, point-two-seven miles west of State Route seven. It says here that Bradford's going to talk to us about this? What's the current status?
I can take this one.
Okay.
The, this was originally scheduled for the February third T S, special TSR meeting. It did not get certified at that meeting. It was, the plan was for it to be certified with all the documents complete at that meeting and for, to be on this meeting. It did not get certified. There has been documents coming in since that meeting. The latest one was this morning. It will have to be scheduled for another TSR, a special TSR that the applicant will have to pay for. Hopefully, they can schedule that for this next Friday. And, and then there'll be a review of all the doc, or review of all documents prior to that meeting, comments given to him, and then hopefully he can get all, anything corrected that needs to be corrected. There is not enough time between now and March third to, to do it from March third, so I suggest we, we make the time specific, March seventeenth.
Okay. Is the applicant aware of this time issue? The reality of the timeline, timetable?
I did not communicate with the, with the applicant.
But you're saying that?
Well, I, well, yes, I did. I did communicate with the applicant. I sent an email last week and I believe I, or earlier in the week, and I believe I copied all the counsel and said that if we were, if we were capable, if we could certify before this meeting, we could recommend something sooner than March third, but if we couldn't certify before this meeting, I would recommend March seventeenth. And that was communicated to the applicant.
Okay, is there anyone here from the applicant? You with the applicant, no? Okay. Comments? Well, before I go forward, let me ask, was there any public comments, cards submitted?
No, Mayor, no.
Comments? Anyone with their hand raised?
No, I have no hand raised. And I don't know if Bradford has had any conversations more recently than my memo.
Bradford, is there anything you want to add to this conversation?
I, Ray, I did not have a conversation. No, sir, I did not have a conversation with him. The only conversation I had was with you.
Okay, so then it would be the memo.
Okay, all right. And I have no public comment card submitted to me, so I'm going to close public comments on agenda item R-two. Any additional comments for members on council?
I guess a question for Ray. Is seventeenth the earliest you think staff would have enough time to look over anything? Or could it be before then? Or is it just not worth doing another meeting? Because at least part of me is thinking, okay, this is a big, important thing, but, you know.
Well, the last TSR on this project was in August. And then it was a special meeting set for February third. So I think the timing between now and Mar, and March seventeenth is not unrealistic. There's several documents that do need to be gone through with a fine-toothed comb, all Ts crossed and Is dotted. But what we're dealing with is review of the title opinions, and we did just get a new one this morning. The plat, the art, I do know there's a few things on there that need to be modified, the construction agreement and, and the bond. So I, I think we're very, very close, and I think, I think that the, the comments, the review of the information we have and comments provided to them at a next TSR would give, would be sufficient time to take him to get the documents revised and back to us for a meeting March seventeenth. But again, it's up to him. I prefer he gives those to us much sooner than March seventeenth.
The seventeenth gives a cushion and a little bit of wiggle.
But we'll, at the TSR meeting, we'll tell them the deadline we need for, for the documents to get it on the March seventeenth meeting.
Yeah, that's really the key. Everyone has to understand that there's a date, what, we're going to, we're going to name a time certain, so worst case.
Right.
It'll be on the agenda and on March seventeenth, and hopefully they've got everything in place so that we can act on it at that meeting.
Right.
Because the reason why I'm raising that issue is because the applicant originally indicated they were wanting to know would we consider calling special meeting on March third, and that was predicated on all the requirements being met and documentation being put in in time. And you're saying that didn't that happen? So the soonest that we can, we can address this again would be March seventeenth time certain.
Yeah, like I said, one document came, a title opinion came in this morning. We are off on Monday. We have a TSR already scheduled for Thursday with seven items on it that staff will be dealing with, and we have a deadline to get it on the agenda for March third would have been next Thursday at noon. So there's just really no time between now and Thursday, next Thursday.
Because we, we've got, we've got notification requirements that we have to meet as well.
Wait, and you're meeting them?
Yeah.
You're, you're meeting them by making it time certain.
That's, okay. Any other questions, comments? So then we have to have, I have to have a motion to move this to, I look for a motion to move this item time certain for a March seventeen council meeting?
I make motion to move, postpone regular agenda item number two to the March seventeenth council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Diane, please let the record show the, the new time certain for this agenda item of March seventeen. Thank you. Okay, agenda item R-three is a public hearing for second reading and adoption of ordinance number one-zero-two-two, amending chapter twenty-six zoning at section two-six dash-two-two, definitions and section two-six dash-five-eight home occupations. To ensure all applicable village definitions and regulations for home occupations conform with recent changes to state law, also amending chapter twenty-three, traffic in vehicles at section twenty-three, two-three dash-one-eight, parking or storage of vehicles, recreation vehicles, boats, commercial vehicles in residential districts, to provide consistency between parking and home occupancy regulations within the village. Keith, you're on.
This is, and thank you for the title. It's a second reading. This ordinance will bring village code into conformance with.
This ordinance will bring the village code into conformance with twenty-twenty-one legislative preemptions regarding home occupations, that the big changes, we can still regulate traffic, parking, aesthetics. They're allowed to, one of the big changes is they're now allowed to have up to two employees who do not live in the residence, that that's a change. But the home occupation still has to be run by a resident and it has to be a secondary use to the primary residential purpose of, of the house, so that doesn't change either.
Is there a requirement in place that someone running such a business out of their home has to make a declaration of how many employees they have participating in this business in their home?
No, there's no, we're not allowed to require any kind of registering with the village or filling out any kind of form. The only thing that we can require is payment of a business tax and obtaining a business tax receipt. That might, I'd have to double-check. That might require you to say what your employee situation is, but I, I couldn't swear to that as we sit here. I can check and let you know.
Okay.
But that's the only regu, that, that's not even regulatory, that's really revenue generating, but that's really the only.
But what, what's our methodology for enforcement then?
So, you know, these are the things where you've got to have neighbors with good eyes who are paying attention to.
Really?
Comings and goings, just, just.
Neighbors with binoculars.
That's something, but yeah, these are difficult.
That's right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, it's employees at the residence. They still may have twenty other employees somewhere else.
Right, working at the residence.
Working at the residence, not how many employees the company has.
All right, so what if, this again, what if a business had that, made a, a, a claim that they had thirty employees or some number greater than two employees working out of their residence for some kind of other government program that they wanted to participate? And they actually made that claim on the official applications they put in?
That would be some evidence that we could take to code enforcement. That, you know, violations would be prosecuted through our code enforcement.
Based on the fact that they made that claim on those applications.
That would be some evidence. I don't know if that would be enough for the magistrate to find in our favor. We might probably need some additional direct evidence, again, people seeing, people coming and going on a regular basis, that type of thing.
All right, we can take this, this offline, okay.
And now, for its questions, it gets my mind thinking, okay, they can, they could have, they could have two employees now. This is putting you on the spot, so I'm sure you may not know, but what does two employees mean? Does that mean two separate human beings or two separate human beings working there at the same time? So you can have thirty employees as long as only two individual employees are on the premises at a time.
The way the statute reads and the way we mirror the statute in our code, it just says you're allowed to have up to two employees who. it just says you're allowed to have up to two employees who do not reside at the residence. It, it's not, that's, that's what it says.
That sounds like two human beings to me, so.
So that would be my interpretation, is that you could have two people who don't live there.
Be a human being and an alien.
Come to work every day.
Okay. Okay, so that.
Whether it's the same two people every day or different two people every day, it, that's not.
That's, that seems great, okay. I'm like, I don't want to go down this hole, but I'm sorry.
Let's go back up to daylight. Thanks, Keith. Um, Diane, do we have any, uh, comment cards submitted prior to? No?
No comments.
Ray, any hands raised who would like to comment on this agenda item?
No, Mayor.
Okay, seeing none. I have no comment cards submitted to me tonight, so I'm gonna close public comment on Agenda Item R3, and this is the second reading. So look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item number three.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show Agenda Item R2, R3 was approved in the second reading. Agenda Item R4 is a public hearing for first reading and approval of ordinance number 980, amending Chapter 26, zoning at Article, uh, 4, supplemental regulations by adding an entirely new section. Section 26-75.6, airport obstructions and incompatibility land uses within the village in order to improve requirements on such obstr- obstructions and land uses in accordance with Chapter 333. That's a weird number. Florida statutes. You're up again. This is your night, Keith.
As promised the last month, uh, when, when you approved the interlocal agreement with the county regarding, uh, airport, um, matters, this is first reading of a ordinance that, that would put on our books some new zoning, um, regarding airport obstructions and land uses that interfere with airport operations. Essentially, we've adopted the county's code on this and, you know, really, um, we've adopted the county's substance, but we have, um, made it clear that the village's procedures for, um, processing development applications is what's used. It's our, our TSR, our, our codes, our, our processes. So, you know, really, you're talking about things like height, um...
That we wouldn't build a building too tall?
Right, that would interfere with airport op- operations. That, that, that really is the one that comes to mind more than anything else. Um.
Okay.
Gives the county opportunity to comment on development applications that are in that airport cone of, of being, affecting the airport. Um, there's code enforcement procedures. There's a, um, you know, the, um, the village engineer's opinion can be appealed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, there's prohibition on granting any variances from any of the zoning requirements in, in this airport regulation, so that's essentially what it does in a nutshell.
So in no way, uh, gives us a, a way, a belief to charge for airspace for flying over our village?
Negative.
This had, I had to ask.
Nice try, though.
Questions?
No, just, well, clarification, quick. This is the entire village. There isn't a specific area of the village that this would pertain to specifically of, oh, yes, that's when.
There's a map that shows the overlay area, but it really captures, I would say, 85 to 90% of the village. It's, it's most all of it, yeah. There might be some on the fringes that, that are excluded, but it's really pretty much the whole place.
Well, this is another question on the building height. Is there a particular height that we are limited to regarding the airspace issue?
There probably is. I don't think that any of the building heights that we have in our code are gonna exceed that.
Wow, 10 stories?
Anything, anything in our, anything in our ordinance hour, anything we've contemplated, it won't affect it. What it may affect is, is lights on the top of the building.
Okay, so like, only helicopters land on top of buildings could be an issue?
Well, no, I think when you get over a certain height and you're, and, and you're in this height, this proximity to the airport, you're, you're gonna need to put different color, red lights on your, top of your building.
I just mentioned a guess that somewhere in the future, this council member sitting here might have to deal with these questions, so. Well, I don't know. I think there's a limit on how, the, for how high the flying cars can go, so. Yeah, they, they don't allow to go over so high. This, this airspace thing is real, I tell you, it's interesting.
And this is another statutory requirement.
Okay.
Of state law, so.
Any other questions, members on council? Uh, Diane, do we have any?
No.
Really requests?
No.
Comments on this, public comments? Ray, anybody have their hand raised out there? I have no public comments here. Uh, card was, uh, provided here, so I'm gonna close public comment on Agenda Item R4. There are no further comments from council. Look for a motion to approve first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, regular agenda item number four.
Second.
Your motion is second, any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that Agenda Item R4, uh, was approved on its first reading. Uh, we have no other items on the agenda this evening. Uh, thank everyone. We stand adjourned.